Like to call the city council meeting for August 28, 2023. If you could all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, could we please call the roll?
Here.
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 Stand up.
Here.
Pregnant?
Here.
Yeah, could I have a motion to excuse Mayor Dean and Councilwoman Lewis?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilperson Lewis and Mayor Dean.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. And if we could have, oh, so we're going to do the mayor's comments. There are none at this time because Mayor Dean is excused at this time. If we could move on to city manager's comments.
Yeah, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. The city manager's report is included in the packet. Happy to answer any questions when we get there.
Okay. Any agenda changes for this evening?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Yes, city staff is requesting that item 15D under new business, which is microphone proposal for chambers be removed.
Okay.
We'll come back to you at a later date.
That sounds great. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to remove item 15D from the agenda?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Item 15D microphone proposal for four chamber, I request.
Second. Second.
All of those in favor? Do we need a roll call on that? That would be Leo?
Leo, yeah.
Thank you.
What's her name?
Voice vote? Yeah, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any guest speakers for this evening? None? Okay, public comment on agenda items only. Is there anybody on the Zoom call for public comment? Okay. So if we could go to the consent agenda, regular city council meeting minutes, if I can have a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes of August 14, 2023 as presented.
Second.
And that's a roll call?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Munti?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peter, please.
Yes.
Pregnant?
Yes.
All right, so we're moving on to the staff report, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The report is included in your packet, starting on page seven. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor or Madam Pro Tem?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. A question on workshop agenda items. We had discussions, two workshops meetings ago where we had a very detailed presentation from the city attorney regarding findings around the Fourth of July expenses. And then this past Wednesday, we had a discussion and closed session regarding findings regarding a contracted vendor that was using city assets up in Mount Baldhead. I'm just wondering, what's the protocol for carrying those forward to a public meeting? Because that report that was done for the Fourth of July found to be very interesting. I thought would be informative for people who had a lot of questions about it. I don't, just, I'm asking, what's the plan to bring that forward? Just so it's presented in a public fashion because of workshop, we don't get a lot of attendees. And two is just an update on kind of what we discussed at the Wednesday workshop for the West Michigan Wireless. So it's just an open question. Mayor Pro Tem. So Jake, you could probably help me out with this one. But I think the correct course of action would be, after you came out of your closed session, you had a really healthy discussion in your closed session. If there's anything that you would want to bring forward to the public, you would then ask the mayor to place that on an agenda. It would be in his discretion to place that on the agenda and or not, especially with the sensitivities of having that discussion be in closed session. You know, I think legal counsel and city staff would urge to be cautious with what you do bring forward to the public. So first step, read out to the mayor. And I'll turn it over to Jake.
Yeah, and then with respect to what is discussed in a closed session, a waiver of attorney client privilege, because that is what protects those closed session discussions from disclosure, would need to be voted on by a majority of the council before any disclosure of those discussions would become public.
Okay, any other questions about that?
And my other question about the Fourth of July report? What is it? What's the question? Well, the city had a really comprehensive report done on the Fourth of July expenses and compliance with city policies. And the report was well done. It was well presented, well researched, and that was presented at a workshop, didn't require action by the council. Is there a plan for us to share that with the public, just so they know that's been completed? I don't know if it's published on the city website. That's kind of my question, how we would just make sure that it's available to folks that want to see it. Well, Madam Mayor Pro Tem? Yeah. So there was a healthy discussion about this item in closed session. In addition to that, there was a newspaper coverage on the release of the report and the information they received. So the process would remain the same. I would recommend that you reach out to the mayor, ask him what you'd like to see in any further disclosures, and go from there. Jake, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's an accurate description of the process.
Is there any further discussion on this? All right, if we can move on to the treasurer's report, then? Anything from the treasury's port?
All there. Working on the audit, working on tax collection. You've got about 18 days to get the property taxes paid with help, fines or penalties. And collections are going. People always seem to pay their bills and saw it, I can tell you that.
That's pretty great, isn't it?
Yeah.
Makes your job nice. Is there any questions?
Yeah, good evening, Peter. In terms of the audit, I know last year, when the audit was released, it was released in its final form. Is there, what is kind of the timeline in terms of presentation discussion with council prior to the actual finalization?
I imagine that is probably going to be early December, late October, late November. I mean, because I've been sending them all the paperwork here the last week or so, basically with email. They have basically the full general ledger right now. There are just a couple of other things I'm working on with the pension plan. And apparently now there's no GAZB with, we have to turn over the lease on the copier. So it's up to the auditors how fast they move along. But since we've used this firm, usually we'd have it in late November, you know, maybe early December. And it kind of works presented to council with Zoom now. That's how they've done it since, I think, 2020. It all, we try to fit it in with the agenda, so. But the actual hard copies, that's, you know, until we sign off on them that we agree with all the findings or changes they've done. But in the past, my goal is I want it done from them by the end of the year, because that's usually the check. You usually have six months after the end of your fiscal year with the state of Michigan. Otherwise, then you've got to start asking for waivers or something if you don't have it done within six months. So I want it done earlier, but it, I don't know what their workload is, so.
Is there a plan to discuss this with council prior to its finalization in a workshop, for instance?
We haven't in the past. We definitely can. I mean, usually I have it for about a month before and they, it's there to review, do we, do we agree with everything that they have stated? And I've never brought that to a council before. We definitely, we can, we can put it on the workshop sometime in October or early November. But usually we haven't had an issue in the past.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
If I may. So Peter, the typical process with the auditor is that they perform the audit and then they receive staff feedback on the audit, correct?
Yeah.
And then it goes to the council?
Yeah. Yeah, so usually whatever in the past is presented, it's the final hard document, it also gets turned over to the state of Michigan Treasury Department, so.
And then council has an opportunity to dive into that. And if they need to take more time to review it, or whatever the concerns are, then it, those, that feedback can be put back to the auditor.
Right, yeah. Because I've, we've never had a really council review it before.
Correct.
Before it's been finalized. Usually it's myself and the city manager that they go through basically everything.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, if I may?
Go ahead, Helen. One thing that I would be very curious about is I know that we were going to have a lot of, typically with an auditor's discussion of liabilities that have been accrued for. I'd be very curious to know their stance on our water situation and what we've got, what we've got coming up with that. So I'd very much like to have a conversation with that before, about that before the final audit is released, just to see.
But I don't wish, I know it's getting off, well, I don't know if the Baker Tilly is really, because that's really, there's never ever been anything on our books about the water with it, because it's, it's an ongoing, I don't know if that's going to happen this year, but in the future.
I don't want to be surprised by it. If they've got something that they want to, that, that there's, there's anything big out there over that?
That's one.
That's the specific one that comes to mind.
And I'll bring that up, because they ask, you know.
It's always that, and then obviously there's litigation and anything, anything sensitive.
Where are the litigation that's been ongoing?
I would say anything.
Water liability, that, that is a good one, because you know, what was, didn't police say it was like 50, they figured 15 million or 16 million, so.
That's number we heard. So definitely curious to know what the presentation is going to be like for that before, you know, we have to see it. And then obviously too, as discussed, the first quarter will be ending at the end of September and we'll look to see updates on that.
Late September, early, no, October on that, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead.
Also, just wanted to note that that's how we do it in interurban over the years, is that we staff reviews and then the, then the, our board reviews as well. So I do appreciate reading it before it's turned in.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Peter.
All right, on to the planning and zoning report. Ryan, do you have anything specific you want to highlight? Any questions of Ryan? Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works, Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, council. Just wanted to highlight that there's some beautiful orange construction barrels up on Taylor Tack and East and West Street, as well as North Maple Street. And so those projects to get those roads rebuilt are underway. I saw that F&amp;V had had some staking done on the side of each of those roads, too. I also want to just make it clear, you know, part of rebuilding the north section of North Maple Street is that we're going to have to de-water the Peterson Nature Preserve as much as we can. So we need to really dry out that soil upstream at North Maple Street to ensure that we end up with a quality product at the end. So don't be surprised if, you know, if you start getting questioned about why the, the nature preserves have dried up. So that's all, unless there's questions.
Ryan, is there something, will have any public comment about, will you be putting that out into the newspaper or anything, just to let people know about that?
That's definitely a good idea, too.
Yes, yeah.
We talked about during that, during our pre-construction meeting, that we would, we would be sending out an e-blast and all the channels that we typically use to notify the public of that.
Good idea.
Just to try to minimize the inquiries coming from there.
What's going on? Okay, all right, Scott, thank you so much.
The duration of that.
Yeah. It's a good question. And, you know, in my opinion, it probably should be as dry as possible for the duration of that project. So, yeah, I don't have an exact date offhand, what time that, the date of when that project will be complete, but I would expect it to be probably mid, mid-fall, mid to late fall, generally speaking.
Add two months.
Winter time.
Okay. So maybe December or, or more.
We'll, we'll, we'll put some, we'll make sure that we put dates in on the public notification for it.
All right, all right.
And just a compliment to the Parks and Public Works staff, working along with Sarah Williams. They did a really good job front-end loading this with conversations with, with the public. So they're in a good position.
Yeah, we did it once before. We did it earlier this summer when there was a culvert going underneath Maple Street that no one even really knew was there because it was covered in muck. And so our, the engineering team found it. And so there was an attempt to jet that culvert out, and it, it was, it was a failed attempt. That thing was just going to keep getting filled up. But we did, we opened up the dam at the Peterson Nature Preserve at that time and let the water out. And I don't think too many people, besides some of the residents, residents that lived around, maybe on Upper Spears Street, besides that, not, we didn't.
Nobody noticed.
Yeah, really. Got away with it.
Well, you know, that park is a lot more popular than it used to be.
Yeah.
I see more people hanging out there than I used to.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Scott. All right. Do we have anybody from the sheriff's department for the police report? Anybody on the Zoom call? Okay. Engineer? John Moxey around for this?
No.
Nobody for that? Okay, we'll move on to boards, commissions, and committees, fire district administration board. Go ahead, Dan.
Good evening, all. Dan Fox, the city's representative to the fire district administrative board. Going to try and stick to these six points I wrote out here. Related to summarizing the August 21st, May 1st, 2003 fire board meeting. I think you know, fire board only meets once a month. You guys obviously meet twice a month. So that's why every other meeting, even though it's listed on the, like, this is listed, there's nothing to report. We haven't had a meeting and so, anyway, I'm just wanting to know, I'm not stiffing you in those times. So the six points, we're very close to the final accounting with the insurance company on the final disposition of the fire boat that sank some time ago and which was fully covered by insurance. Bottom line on this one is that there is no, no adverse financial impact to the fire district, right, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you. Second, we were updated on a cost recovery action regarding the unlicensed burn incident in Ganges that took place the same day as the fire out at the, in the dunes near the, the house out there. And it was a challenging fire. There's some general frustration on the district's part due to the owner's kind of recalcitrance and failure initially willingness to pay anything. Oh, thank God you came to, now, and now he's not engaging whatsoever, has attorneys, which every guilty person has an attorney. So anyway, it's, we're kind of at an impasse. It's a serious number because it's, it was an $8,000 issue for the fire district. That's an important number. Unfortunately, the district's recourse is limited and primarily because you can only push so far, and then you hit legal battles. And we all know the costs of lawyers in and around the area, and you can eat up $8,000 in a freaking weekend. So, anyway, I was going to, Mayor Dean had been here. I was going to appeal to him and his, and his day job, as he likes to say, because Eagle has reviewed that whole thing and has at some level been involved in that whole incident. And it would be greatly helpful to have Eagle cite that property owner, because what was burned were tires. They were unlawfully stored, obviously unlawfully burned, whether he did it or somebody else did it. So anyway, Scott, if you're listening on Zoom or wherever, help. Third point, we received the second of 578, roughly $7,800 payments from the Holland Community Foundation on behalf of the Gerald and Jeanette Becken Foundation. This generous donation is in memory of Jerry Becken's long service on the fire board, and it's going to be recognized with an inscription on the side of the 2110, the newest of the fire engines, as well as a written thank you from Chief Janik on behalf of the board. Fourth, we authorized $30,000 for the replacement of five-inch large diameter fire hose. That hose has a finite life and so has to be replaced. Five, there was a long discussion related somewhat to comments I gave to you last time around. On the potential move for the fire district to add basic life support. BLS transport of injured people. I'll give you my notes, Jamie. To its mission and capabilities, recognizing the all-too-frequent unavailability of such service in a timely fashion from the two ambulance services in the area. As it stands now, that service is rendered by those two AMR and life ambulances for the three jurisdictions, but without any contract at all, exclusive of the contract that life has with the township for a small, small portion of township geography. The district, fire district, is aiming to facilitate a meeting very soon. Ryan, just a heads up for you. Maybe they've talked to you already. With city and township managers to explore the issue in, in more detail, but with an eye towards setting the stage for the jurisdictions to jointly transfer their responsibility for these services to the fire district by intergovernment, I mean, not just the cities, it would require council votes on each one of those, to transfer that responsibility to the fire district, which will then set up the fire district to be able to operate against that mission as it stands right now. And if you know the fire guys or EMS people, they'll respond to everything, but the reality is they can't. I mean, and they're not, they're certain, they're not supposed to engage in, except under the most extreme circumstances in, in BLS transport. I point out again, I think I've done it before, but the difference between, there are two types of ambulance service. BLS, which is the lower of the two, and it's generally a transport of injured, but not dreadfully injured, as you will in my civilian term, to a hospital. The advanced life support, ALS, involves more, more highly certified emergency medical technicians and equipment that is significantly higher. It may look the same from the outside, but inside the ambulance, a lot more stuff and it's a lot more expense. So those are the two levels of that. And I think, I mean, we've talked about it in the fire district and continue to talk about it. This is an exposure for our community that, that there is no charted who's responsible, who's in charge, who sets the standards, who sets the pricing, what are the appeals routes? All of that stuff needs really to get established. Anyway, okay. The six point, finally, three points on the community risk reduction front, which as you know, is the fire district's primary mission. The chief, first of all, the chief has worked with the township to develop temporary signage to discourage dangerous parking on the shoulder of Blue Star Highway in front of both Pennyroyal and Jars, which is south of the interstate bridge on Blue Star, where the success of those two businesses is such that you go there on Saturday morning or Sunday morning in front of Pennyroyal. I was told there were 12 cars there by a friend the other day. I mean, it just, it, it's highly distressed because virtually all 12 of those cars are from people who are not familiar with this area, who probably think little kids in the backseat, a five or six-year-old can get out. And the minute that kid steps out of the left-hand side of the car, they're facing 55 mile an hour traffic that is not looking for them and not expecting them there. So this raised a lot of, this raised the chief's concern. He spoke to the county road commission. There's a lot of issues there. You have to talk to the state police, blah, 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 blah. So we were limited in terms of, he was limited in terms of what could actually be done. You can't just slap no parking signs on a state road like that. So they came up with a compromise and Daniel DeFranco and his people were quick to act. So it's a nice, a nice resolution of kind of a thorny problem. Secondly, the chief is working with, as I think, Ryan, I think you know, with the Mount Baldhead September 9th run group in terms of traffic control, including providing traffic cones, including more traffic cones than the fire district has, but borrowing some from Brasscap and Hamilton Departments. You, and you have, you should have a whole summary of that, which I got today in an email. So if you don't, let me know. And also on number three noted that the first accident at Blue Star and Old Elegant since the township's remediation efforts with those blinking stop signs had occurred. I don't have the date in front of me, sometime in the last two weeks. Fortunately, it was a PDO, as they say, a property damage only, so there were no injuries. But also in regard to that, that intersection, following intersection, following the discussion of last month's fire district incident statistics, that long thing that I, and then I presented a few highlights from, the discussion in the, in this council chamber, there were a number of council, council members who expressed an interest in seeing much more detail in that particular instance, in the case of the data related to Blue Star and Old Elegant. Quote-unquote, "This is not the data I need to see," said one of you. Subsequently, the full data set, the, all the data we've got on that intersection, which is literally every incident with identification, including identification, when the stop sign went in and so forth, injuries, no injuries, property damage, whatever, all that information was sent, was sent to you, I think, within 48 hours of this meeting. So if any of you, any, and I mean this sincerely, if any of you develop further insights from your own personal review of that data, the fire district, the chief, is most willing and anxious to hear thoughts, ideas, and further questions if there are any, although, as I say, as to more data, that's it. That's all we've got.
Is there still thoughts on doing a roundabout at that intersection? Are there still thoughts on doing a roundabout at that intersection?
That's township, I think. I don't, I, I've heard that.
I know it is the township. I'm just wondering if the fire district has heard more on that.
I'm kind of speaking out of school. It's not, from the fire service perspective, it's not a great answer.
It hasn't been confirmed that it's going forward?
Nothing formally has come to the fire district. Now, it's an issue because of moving trucks through the fire trucks, emergency vehicles through that kind of a situation, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I do notice, though, that southbound on Blue Star, we assume the county road commission did this and did it on their own without, I mean, other than the standard pleas about this kind of stuff, have put up a, the kind of chartreuse colored warning sign that's not yellow, so it stands out a little more, just south of 134th Street, just south of North Street. And it's a crossroad sign, but underneath it, it says 40 miles an hour. Every little bit helps. Every little bit helps, and that, that would cause people to potentially drop five or 10 miles out if they notice it. And again, as I say.
Gregory, do you have something?
Yeah, I want to thank you for talking about, you know, I forgot all about the incident that happened with me last weekend driving down Blue Star in front of Pennyroyal and Ronan Black. Somebody was turning left and almost hit me.
Oh.
As I drove down that way and scared the crap out of me, because those cars are parked on both sides of that drive, and that car couldn't look out, and he didn't come out further enough to see if he could make that left or not. So I'm really glad that the township and, and y'all picked up on that.
And really great credit to the township, because they acted and acted quickly. And they were responding partly to a, to the property owner just to the north of Pennyroyal, who, when those cars are parked on the shoulder, he, he's got to, you know, coming out of his driveway, he's got to get onto Blue Star. He can't see anything. And I mean, he's got to get part of the car into the roadway before he can see anything, because.
There's not that big of a shoulder.
I'm surprised it's legal to park on the shoulder of a highway.
Yeah. I am, I was too. I thought the same.
It's, to my knowledge, from whatever thing we could find out, it's not illegal. I mean, I don't think even, like, you know, if you had an accident or if you were dropping something off at somebody's house, I mean, I, they probably don't have a law written for, is it illegal to have a dozen cars or eight, is there a limited number? I don't think, I don't think it is. And again, the jurisdiction over who controls that is, is offers some problems. County Road Commission, state of Michigan.
There's another business, the root beer barrel, has people lined up and down on Ferry a lot, and that's the city of Douglas owns a root beer barrel.
And like, the same thing, I see the kids come out and I go down both of those roads throughout the week very often. And that, again, you've got kids.
25, but still.
It's 25, but still, like you said, so doesn't mean that everybody goes 25 down.
It's very dangerous.
Well, I don't know if Douglas pays any attention to what we do or what's done in this room, but the, the signs that we designed are going to be kind of like the political campaign signs, stick right on into the shoulder. And it says danger, da-da-da-da. So it looks totally and is totally legit. You can't say no parking, so we don't say no parking.
You're just warned of the danger of parking.
Park or whatever it says. But those signs would be easily available to Douglas if they, I mean, can't cost that much.
Is there anything else for Dan? Any other questions? All right, thanks, Dan. Anything from the inner urban board, Gregory?
Not since I last reported that we'd received that $250,000 grant and, and in our last meeting, Phyllis was here as well. And so we're getting ready to start it. But I did want to mention, both last weekends, driving up and down the hill and going down Elizabeth Street when it was packed here in town, there was plenty of parking there at the high school. And again, folks that are talking about parking. Um, there was plenty of parking there at the high school. And again, uh, folks that are talking about parking, um, please take advantage of the shuttle service. We have the free shuttle service just till the end, just another weekend or two um, on the weekends, but we are still open till eleven on Friday and Saturday night. So um, there's parking, just use the shuttle, that's all, or walk a couple of blocks. There's, there's parking for more people, so.
Okay, Gregory, thank you. Anything from Kalamazoo Lake Sewer and Water Authority is Barry here?
Mr. Johnson said he would not be able to make the meeting tonight.
Okay, uh, Cal Lake Harbor Authority, we meet next month. And zoning board of appeals, do we have anybody from zoning? Okay, historic district, I know Garnet's gone, but anything from historic? They meet next week? Okay, thanks, Ryan.
What, the date and time?
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, you will not get away with one meeting.
All right, uh, yes, they meet next, uh, Thursday, uh, at six P M. Here at City Hall, they have, uh, three cases to review.
Okay, you might as well stay right there because we have planning commission next. Um, if, uh, Russ would like to talk about that?
Good, thank you. Uh, we met last Thursday. We had a, we had a long meeting. Um, so I want to thank city staff for being patient with the commissioners as we worked our way through it. We had three things we discussed. Once we had a, um, a short-term rental task force update from, uh, Chairperson Anderson, which was, which was very interesting and some kind of some conclusions are starting to be reached. Uh, I won't, won't steal any thunder from them, but they are driving towards some recommendations. So I think they're on track. Um, also too is that we, um, we actually had a site plan review for a subdivision, which is approved over off of Vine Street on the other side of the river. Does everybody know where Vine Street is?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And Vine Street, if you go up Vine, there's a small, uh, subdivision off to the right. I forget the name of the street. It's a non-city street. There's seven subdivided properties that are going to be approved there. The site plan was approved. Uh, it was not unanimous, thought it was five to two. Um, but we had a presentation by the developer and by the property owners. Um, so it was, uh, it was a very interesting discussion. The subdivision actually was approved administratively back in two thousand nineteen. So the first question that came up is, why did it take four years literally for the planning commission to get the site plan? Well, I heard there were some other issues. I think, I don't remember the exact detail, but there was, there were some, there were some reasons for the delays. So, um, just be, uh, just be aware, there could be some development going on over off of Vine Street. Uh, we did get some feedback from, uh, local property owners that were concerned about the, uh, scale of development. Uh, the third item was a update from our planning, uh, consultant on the survey for the short, for the waterfront moratorium, uh, which was very well detailed, a lot of good information. I think probably the biggest takeaway that I've had is that there was no big surprises in terms of feedback we got from the community. As well as from the, uh, we went out, we did some public engagement at different events. And it was really clear from the survey and from the feedback we're getting from folks, what's really important to them is continued access to the waterfront, visibility to the water, ability to enjoy the waterfront that we've grown up with or have come here to appreciate, to enjoy. The other thing that, that was kind of interesting about that discussion was, um, we started talking about the actual zoning districts and there's three zoning districts. There's Water Street North, Water Street South, and the one that's across the river, which is.
Resort District.
Thank you, Resort District. The interesting thing that came up is that we, we determined there's a difference between Water Street South and Water Street North in terms of its usage and so forth. What was interesting about the Resort District across the river, the planning commission started talking about, well, why don't, because the waterfront is the same on both sides, whether east side or west side of the river. Why isn't there discussion regarding maybe making the resort part of the Water Street North District? So you've got the waterfront, waterfront development, zoning is exactly the same because there's some differences. So there'll be some interesting discussions. I know David Jurassic, our planning consultant, was, uh, really helpful in taking down some of the notes. He asked us to make some decisions regarding general direction that the planning commission wants to see this take. Ultimately, this will come back to council for review, but, um, it was, it was really kind of interesting discussion. No big surprises. People love the waterfront and they want to continue to maintain visibility and, and accessibility.
Ryan, is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. One thing I just wanted to just quick clarify the, uh, and, and it's just, I can see how it, it, if you look at it, maybe a, a subdivision, but, um, it's, the, the project over off of Vine Street is not a subdivision as defined by the Land Division Act. It was, um, there's kind of some separate nuances with that, but, uh, but it was certainly before the, the planning commission for formal site plan review uh, as far as the, the zoning aspects, but it was actually a, a land division, uh, request, um, to create the, the seven lots. Um, something we looked at pretty extensively, uh, over a period of time with our, our legal council. But one more, Mr. Gardner, that you did forget down the street. The special land use request for the restaurant and.
Oh, yes, exactly. Thank you, thank you. It took me a second. Yes, it's the, uh, commonly known as Reed's Livery or the Toulouse Building or the Old Jail, for those of you that have been around a while. Um, there's a, uh, there was a special land use, uh, request, which was approved unanimously for a, uh, restaurant and a brewery.
Mm-hmm.
And it was, um, very well received and, uh, the, the team that was here to present the idea, uh, really seemed to have their, have their work cut out for them, but I think a really good plan. So the planning commission was very supportive of that.
And will we see the results of the, uh, survey that went out for the waterfront?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the results of, uh, kind of that, yeah, the outcome of all of that was in the last, uh, planning commission packet. But if you want to see kind of those results or that report maybe separated out, we can certainly forward that on to you.
Okay.
On the, uh, the subdivided, uh, lots, what approximately, what is the acreage on those lots?
Um, I can get you the specifics. I can send you the, the, the formal site plan so you can take a look. Yep.
And I appreciate the correction, land division, not subdivision. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a difference.
Yeah, um, just a question. I guess I'm curious about the brewery. Um, do they plan on, uh, brewing right on the premises there, right?
They do have a ten barrel system and they're planning opening sometime in the summer of twenty twenty-four, I believe.
And still retail in the front? The, the retail spots will stay open in the front? Okay.
Yes, yeah, they, they have a pretty good plan. And, uh, one of the, one of the two, um, um, developers, I guess, for lack of a better term, used to work for brewery in Grand Rapids called Bon Vivant, if you're familiar with that, which was part of New Holland Brewing Company at one time. It's actually the partner split. And, um, so some really good experience there. So I'm pretty excited. It's going to be a good addition to the town.
I'd like seeing, we used to call it, when I had Del Sol, we used to call it, uh, Restaurant Row on Culver Street, back when everything was open. And then everything had closed. A lot of the businesses had closed. So it's nice to see everything like Duck Alley and all the new businesses that, uh, are on Culver. Thank you.
Should be an exciting project.
Okay, so we're moving on to the short-term rental task force. Uh, if you want to stay up for just one more second.
All right.
So, so our next meeting is this coming Thursday, correct?
Uh, next Thursday. Yeah, we're kind of in between here.
That's right, because it's not until September. So the following Thursday. But State Representative Joey Andrews will be coming here. Remind me again when that is happening.
Uh, this Friday, uh, at the, uh, uh, I'm sorry, library.
Okay.
Yep, at the library.
Three fifteen to five fifteen.
You can probably have it better down.
I remember that because I can't make that. I'll be at work and I think you will be too. And I wish I could be.
Yeah, but it's this coming Friday.
Friday.
At the library at around three o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get the time before you're done.
Yeah, so State Representative Joey Andrews is going to be talking about the latest legislation as far as short-term rentals um, and what the state is looking at as far as that's concerned. So it'll be really interesting just to hear what he has to say as far as, um, proposals that are going forward as far as that's concerned. So I'm sure we'll have an update on that. Okay, Ryan, thank you. Um, moving on to Parks and Public Works Committee, Helen?
Yes, thank you, ma- mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Um, all right, I, but things are moving along well with the five-year Tri-Community Parks and Rec Plan. We are on pace. Um, we're going to be looking for some community input. A survey will be going out very soon. And there will be a, um, open house on the twenty-first of September from four to six, the library. We'll be getting all that out and, uh, posting in the newspaper and, and all that. There's, there's a lot that needs to be done administratively, but that's definitely, it's all set. Um, our crack, uh, D P W team has filled in a lot of holes in that on Park Street and created some signage for when you exit the chain ferry. Replace the roof on the Mount Bald Head bathroom and the pavilion is next. Um, but yeah, motor it along.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's great. Uh, Tri-Community Non-Motorized Trail Study Committee.
Nothing new to report since our last meeting. Thank you.
Sounds great. And Tri-Community Recycling Ad-Hoc Committee. We don't have anything from Garnet this time. Okay, uh, request for payment, we have none at this time. Um, approval of accounts payable um, in the amount of four hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem will make a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of four hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and that's a rule call?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I have, or Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I have, I have some questions about the accounts payable.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, please. First is, uh, there's a one thousand five hundred thirty-one dollar, twenty-five cent Skipper's Construction, one eighty-four Park Escrow. Do we know what that is?
Peter?
We know what that is, I'm asking.
Peter?
Reimbursement for escrow payment and Ryan, the planning division told me to pay him back. Then we took, they originally paid us two thousand dollars. So there was what, four hundred some dollar bill that the city was reimbursed and
Okay.
That's what, it's for skippers and there's multiple for those to come in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Like Ryan to explain more on that or?
No, I, that, that was, that was, that was exactly what I was looking for. Um, item four, aquatic doctors, lake management incorporated milfoil treatment. Forty-four thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars. Um, I'm questioning, we have not, at least I haven't recalled seeing a recent update regarding the, um, regarding the treatment of the lake for milfoil. I know there was a lot of discussion in years back and we had a committee, we had a, a task force. I forget the exact name of it. Um, and I also recall that we, we paid money back in June for treatment as well. I, I, I'm struggling with, that's a big bill. And forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and forty, nine hundred forty-two dollars without some detail regarding kind of the game plan here, what was treated. We had a plan at one time that we're collecting money from some of the residents around the lake. Um, I'm a little concerned about that's, that, that's quite a big money just.
Ryan, do you want to address that?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, just let me go back to some, some of the previous discussions that you had as council.
Thank you.
The, the, the short summary is that, um, you did at one point in time, um, charge the waterfront owners, uh, for the treatment in front of their, their property boundaries, which was based on a linear foot cost. Uh, there was a conversation with council that we're going to get away from that and that the city would assume all the costs. So I'll, I'll bring that history back up and send it out to council.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to see some details around this so I can understand from a cost standpoint exactly what we treated and kind of plan there. So.
Okay.
Has, has the milfoil group met at all? Are they still active?
The, the sun, sorry, Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Yeah, no, they sunset a long time ago, um, pretty much after they got the milfoil project up and running. So that was almost over two years back. Okay, yep. Again, the conversation with council is, do you want to continue to bill the waterfront owners? Peter and I talked about the time spent on doing that. And, um, is that time well spent? And I don't want to speak for Peter, but we came to the conclusion and discussed with council is that it's better that the city just assume this cost rather than us doing two billings for multiple parcels. Uh, uh, how many points of contact were there? Like probably a hundred and sixty, I'm not quite sure. Uh, Peter can speak to this real quick.
I mean, there's a lot of, basically the private lakes or, or riverfront that we were doing, you know, the people, some people wanted action, you know, it's not, I don't think it's, I'm not, I don't know if it's one and done or that, that the residents had questions, you know, is this going to be forever bill, like a water bill or a light bill? And, and some of them pushed back pretty, I mean, I got a whole file of people that said, take me off the list, you know, don't call me again. And so they, I don't think they understand what the process was, was the, was the biggest thing. And so I don't know where we're at, but yeah, it's a, it's a big bill.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm not, I'm not, I, I just want to better understand exactly what the plan is here and, and if this could be an ongoing cost for the citizens. Um, it benefits obviously a lot of folks, but I just want to better understand from a cost standpoint kind of what the go-forward plan is going to be. That's, that's a fair amount of money.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, it, it should be a conversation for your strategic planning meeting because as originally presented, uh, not to get hung up on this one issue, but, um, that the milfoil year after year with treatment would eventually, the milfoil would decrease and that there were some other methods that we could look at as far as treatment, um, going forward. So it, it is good timing and I, I've made some inquiries to, to the, the treatment, aquatic treatment folks uh, with that same viewpoint. It's like, okay, we, we've done this for a few years. What's going to happen going forward? So happy to have that discussion.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we do, uh, have a rule call we need to take at this point.
Yes. Bunsey?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean and Lewis are excuse, motion carries.
Okay, uh, we have no introduction of ordinances, no unfinished business. And now we are on to new business with the hemlock wooly adelgid. Is it a hard G or is it a soft G?
It's a G.
Adelgid.
Adelgid, yeah. But that was really.
You want to take this?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay.
All right, so council discussed this at their workshop, um, last week. And, uh, the city as a whole has been talking about treating their hemlock trees, uh, against this pest, which is called the hemlock wooly.
Adelgid?
Yes. Um, and so we've been working with the elegant county, uh, conservation district. And Ryan is here this evening. Uh, he presented to you all, uh, in the past. Uh, after his presentation, uh, which was, I think, in the spring of some, some point in time, May, I think, somewhere in the spring, um, the city council did approve in their budget the amount to cover the lowest qualified bidder, uh, that the elegant conservation district went out and sought. So on page twenty-two, all the way through page forty, I believe, is all the detail. Um, and so I do have a recommended motion. One of the questions that came up at the workshop was, okay, the city of Sagatuck treats their hemlocks on public property. Uh, what, what of the other surrounding properties, meaning both privately owned owners, uh, township properties, uh, city village of Douglas, if we do this treatment, is it, is it money well spent? Uh, I did send that email out to, to Brian who's here. Um, so it, it's up to you. Do you think it'd be a good use of time for him to kind of speak to that?
I, I think we would like to hear from Brian about that. Yeah.
Um, I see I've also got, uh, one of the, uh, technicians from G E I who's on the call as well. She can, uh, Asia can answer some, any technical questions you might have about the treatment.
If you wouldn't introduce yourself?
Yeah, Brian Talzma, Executive Director for the elegant conservation district.
Thank you so much.
Um, so I, I think that, um, the value in this treatment is really in preserving the existing ecosystem that you have on, uh, city properties. Um, right now, you know, you're in the early phase of infestation from H W A and that this treatment lasts, um, six to ten years, um, and sort of continues to protect that area. Without the treatment, you're looking at some substantial loss of the hemlocks, which are holding up the dunes. They're providing a lot of ecosystem structure, um, and providing a lot of important natural resources essentially to the area. Um, so even if surrounding areas decide not to treat their H W A, there is, I, I think, significant value in ensuring that your property is protected. Um, to that point, um, the one thing that I did bring up in my presentation, um, earlier this year was that this will be an ongoing effort. Um, hemlock wooly adelgid is probably here to stay, um, to some degree. And so using this time that you get with this treatment, um, would be really valuable in terms of finding ways, other ways to, um, maintain that ecosystem. So either identifying the most, um, valuable hemlocks to preserve and continuing to treat them, uh, over time, um, while replacing them in other areas that maybe aren't worth the effort. Um, or if other treatments come out, you know, sort of staying apprised of the, the most current technology. Are there any?
Yeah, does any have any, anyone have any questions of Brian?
No, thank you. The biggest question that I had even during our workshop was, you know, do we suffer from others, other, uh, entities not treating? And it's good to hear that, that we'll still gain the benefit regardless of what, what our neighbors decide to do. I appreciate that.
And I think a lot of people just want to know the simple question is if we do nothing, what would happen?
Right, yeah, and, um, maybe Asia can speak a little bit more specifically to this, but, um, typically, uh, the trees will die, you know, in, in less than ten years. Um, I don't know, Asia, do you have any, uh, specific input on that?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Um, I would just like to add that the hemlock trees are a major component of our do and systems, um, as you mentioned before, huge for erosion control as well as habitat. Uh, I think it's really important that we target, uh, hemlock stands that are very. I think it's really important that we target hemlock stands that are very dense so that we can prevent widespread of the hemlock woolly adelgid. And so by targeting these denser stands, we are really taking control of the spread. And if we did not do that, then it would spread a lot more rapidly, and we would see a huge die-off of this species, which would have a lot of different effects on our natural resources.
Any other questions?
And just to be clear, we're covering over, and we've got a tree count actually, over 3,000 trees, just so folks know what we're doing. 4,000, 4,000 trees, thank you for that number, and quite a bit of acreage for that. That's quite a project. But, and so you know that this is guaranteed to work, right? This is, this is a process that you've done, it's a proven-
Yeah, it's a, you know, a pesticide that's been used for a number of insects that basically, you know, feed on tree sap. So it's very effective, it's got pretty, it doesn't affect, impact a lot of off-target insects, so you know-
That's what I was getting asked.
Bees or anything like that. Anything that basically feeds on the sap of the tree will be affected, but that's not many things.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, could we have a motion?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I have a question. Good evening, thank you for being here. Kind of building off of what Councilmember Muncy just asked. Looking at the scope of work, so identify all infected hemlock trees in the northwestern portion of Alleghen County, which is the scope that we have in the project in front of us. And I was late to the workshop on Wednesday, so if I'm asking some questions that were asked, please excuse me, I wasn't here for the discussion. Trying to understand, so as I look at this, we have, I forgot the total count of acres is on here. So my question is, Mount Balded Park, 154 acres, which is, which is, you know, literally 10 times any of the other spots that we're actually inventoried. So my question is, is that we have a severe problem within Mount Balded Park and within the city of Sagatuck's acreage in Northwest County, Northwest Alleghen County? Is that what this is saying, as opposed to we have more hemlock trees than any other area in Northwest? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, your second point is correct. You have pretty, really high densities of hemlock trees, and at this point, most hemlock trees are, you know, getting HWA if they don't already have it. So because you have that huge density, there is, you know, a lot of adelgid.
So, and I'm thinking, I was, a couple of years ago, I was up in Londonton State Park, and apparently they've, that's, that's kind of, I didn't know what you want to call it, it's kind of like the firewall for this pest coming south, which apparently has made its way through that. So has it just chosen because of our density within Mount Balded Park with the number of hemlocks, why it's such an issue? I mean, it just, it stands out that we've got so much to treat as compared to the other areas that were looked at. It's not criticism, it's just more of a question to understand. We got a lot of hemlocks, we're lucky to have them, and they need to be treated.
Yeah, so the way that, you know, these properties were chosen to be surveyed, it was just on a basis of who came forward and asked for it. So, you know, this land was chosen because I think we had this conversation with Ryan, maybe last year, and he was interested in exploring that. So we moved forward with the survey, and that's how we kind of got here.
Thank you.
Okay. And at this point, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with GEI Consultants for chemical treatment of hemlock trees on public property in the amount of $44,400.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Leo, second by Baldwin, and if we could have a rule call?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Dean and Lewis are excuse.
Okay, motion carries. And we are moving on to Household Hazardous Waste, that is on page 41 in your packet. I know Garnet handled this at the workshop, but Ryan, would you like to take this?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you did discuss this at your workshop. There is a sample motion on the bottom of page 41, which would be a recommended motion to approve City of Sagatuck contributions towards Household Hazardous Waste and Styrofoam Collection Event in the amount not to exceed $3,000.
Great, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'm sorry, I'd like to move to approve the City of Sagatuck contribution toward Household Hazardous Waste and Styrofoam Collection Event, the amount not to exceed 3,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Muncy, second by Baldwin. If we could take a rule call?
I just want to say real quick-
Any more to it?
I just want to add, it's a great collaborative effort. I see all of our communities are involved in this, so.
With the Rotary Club leading the way, financially.
We're going to talk about it, let's talk about it.
Yeah, is there any more discussion? I mean, obviously, we went into great detail about this at the workshop as far as all the various organizations that are contributing to this, including Rotary being the number one contributor, the Fire Department, and then Douglas, the township, also contributing to this. As you mentioned, lots of people, you know, involved with this. It's a tri-community effort, if you will. Any other discussion? All right, if we could take the rule call on that?
Gardner?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean and Lewis are excuse. Motion carries.
All right, and we are now on to item C, Special Event Chili Cookoff, if you could go to page 44 in your packet.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Chili Cookoff to take place on October 8th, 2023, organized by the Cow Hill Yacht Club.
Second. Okay, motion by Baldwin, second by Leo, any discussion?
I'd just like to say, welcome back to the Chili Cookoff. It's been a few years, and it's a great event. So looking forward to it.
I'm so excited!
Yeah, it has been a while, and it really is a local event. I realize that, you know, a lot of tourists involved, but it's really a local event, and we did miss it for many years. So it's really great to have it back. If we can take a rule call vote on that? Oh, it's a voice vote. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Yes.
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 Yes or aye, and that all holds true? Motion carries. All right, and we are on to item D, Microphone Proposal for Chamber, but we did decide to move on with that one. So we're going to move on to the donation box at Mount Balded, which would be page 56 in your packet.
The very back of the packet.
Here we go.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to allow the members of the Historical Society maintain a donation box at the base of Mount Balded Stairs with all proceeds going to us, the city, for operations and maintenance of Mount Balded Public Facilities.
Second.
Okay, motion by Muncy, seconded by Baldwin. This is a voice vote, but do we have any discussion on it?
Yes, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to make one correction of the motion, to amend it, to say, allow members of the Sagatuck Douglas Historic Center, is their official name.
Oh, yes, I would like to amend that, to allow members of the Historic-
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to allow the members of the Historic-
Sagatuck Douglas-
Sagatuck Douglas Historical Society, maintain-
History Center.
History Center. I'm so sorry. Maintain a donation box at the base of Mount Balded Stairs with all proceeds going to the city for operations and maintenance of Mount Balded Public Facilities.
Second.
And is that okay? You have everything you need on that one? Yep, that's great. Is there any discussion on that?
I would just, I met with Renee Zeta, who was kind of the impetus behind this, and I think it's a great idea. We'll see how much money. She had $78 the last time I talked with her, so there's already been money contributed. And I'm assuming that our treasurer will be able to earmark the money to go directly to the repair and maintenance of the Balded infrastructure.
All right.
Not into the general fund, so. Big task for your treasurer. So it's a nice effort, and I really appreciate Renee Zeta's focus here, so.
All right, any other discussion? And this is a voice vote, so all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And anyone opposed, and motion carries on that. And now is a chance for public comment on anything you would like to comment on. Is there anybody in the room? Go ahead and go up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give us your address.
Mary Jo Lemansky. I live at 6558 Heron Ridge Road in Sagatuck Township.
Thank you.
And this is to the Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council and the City Manager. This statement's in regarding the acquisition of the sculpture Canary Nicole Mine by Sculptor Sean Philip Moran. Most of you know the brief background on the details of the current process to present, educate, discuss, evaluate, and approve the sculpture. We've been working on several different components of this, originally started in January of 2023, when it was identified that the sculpture by Sean Moran was damaged irreplaceably, and we started seeking insurance funds to replace that piece. It's been a current process, it's, you know, stopped and waned for quite a while. And on July 19th, I was asked to do a presentation, a formal presentation about the sculpture. I received some comments or questions and concerns from the City Council, which I addressed on the 19th. And on that date, Mayor Scott Dean gave the PPW the task of selecting a site for the piece, and so what happened during that meeting was, the discussion took place. General consensus from the members was that it had a strong possibility for being approved on the location. The funding was pending, and any decision would be made, or would not be made, would be delayed until sufficient funds were available. With the help of Sean, we wrote a grant proposal to the CBB for the remainder of the funds. The grant, the Board of the CBB approved that request on August 11th. Moran was informed that the funds were raised, and the next step would be to find out a recommendation from the PPW on the placement of the sculpture, and that was just discussed on August 15th. At that point, Sean set a deadline of August 21st for a decision to be made due to storage issues and due to the process and the length of it. Before the meeting for the PPW, Helen presented the Canary and the Coal Mine proposal, and to some of the members who had personal opinions about the piece and the placement and the size of the sculpture. So she made the decision to, with two board, our two committee members not being there, that the discussion of the sculpture be tabled until the committee was present. And she did state that many of the members had little background and knowledge or appreciation of public artwork, and were a bit kind of confused about the whole piece and the placement of it. So we had talked about August 28th, which is today, would be the date that was targeted for the decision to be made on the approval and the acceptance of the sculpture. Friday, Scott Dean sent out a notification that without a decision on the placement of the sculpture, he moved the date to addressing the sculpture's purchase and placement until the next workshop. There were several emails that talked about, between Ryan, Helen, Baldwin, CBB, about forming an advisory committee through the CBB to research and analyze any proposals of public art that appear pertaining to public art on the Art Coast. Establishing the committee, it was agreed was going to take several months. This information was given to Sean this morning. He stated that with the current funds raised, there was definite movement to purchase the sculpture. He has asked that the sculpture is purchased. He will deliver the piece to an agreed storage site until the decision has been made on the placement of the sculpture. Due to his time constraints and the length of this process, he is requesting an immediate decision. If this is not possible, he's asked me to seek other interested parties who will have funds and will be able to expedite the process. I'm here as an advocate for the arts on the Art Coast. I've received past and present support from this council and the other city councils, efforts in fundraising. And we've been re-energizing the public arts in the three communities. I also represent the artist. After 36 years in art communities, as an artist, an educator, a dealer, I placed over a dozen public sculptures in the Midwest. I receive no compensation, obviously, I'm doing it on a volunteer basis. And I highly recommend that the city use these allocated funds to purchase the Canary Nicole Mine. And we're willing to work with the PPW, members of the council, to educate and bring awareness of the importance of maintaining a progressive, innovative work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, any other comments in the audience tonight? And Jamie, do you see anything online? Anyone online?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on to council comments. If we could start with Helen?
Something at this time. Oh, actually, I do have something. Mount Balded Challenge will be a week from Saturday. We won't be meeting before. But yeah, encourage everybody, if you haven't signed up, to sign up. It's a good time, and the party will be at Coffin Park afterwards. So join us, even if you don't run, you can come and have a beer.
So it's a week from this Saturday?
Saturday, it's a week from, yes, Saturday, September 9th.
Great, thanks, Helen. Gregory?
Happy Labor Day weekend already, everybody. Can you believe it's already here? I can't believe it. But I wanted to remind everybody about the Bridgewater. I used to get calls when I was with Sadaba all, every year about this time, asking, when is the traditional Sagatuck Labor Day Parade? There never has been one, folks. But the Bridgewater is at 9:15. He'll meet over there on the Douglas side of the bridge with the town crier to do the .19 mile trek across the bridge on Monday morning. So looking forward to that. Happy Labor Day.
Fantastic.
Just want to say, I saw the terrific Jersey Boys last night, and if you have not seen it, you must. So a shout out to Kurt Stam and the community, which has supported the SCA and that production, so it's worth the time.
It is fantastic. Go ahead.
Well, what a night.
Yeah.
That's my favorite song. So I will be up at the top of Mount Balded on Mount Balded Challenge Day. I will be working radios. I've been asked by the by Jim Sullivan and the volunteer coordinator, so if you're up there, and if you're running, you will see me. Give you word of encouragement. If you're not registered, please do so.
Are you doing it this year?
Yeah.
My wife is signing up.
Is doing it.
My wife has signed up as well.
You know, as far as council comments, you know, as a council person, I joined City Council because I wanted to be a representative of the business community, and we're all real tired right now. This is the time of year. I think college students went back a week early this year, and as far as high schoolers, they went back a little bit earlier than usual, especially in Sagatuck. Usually, in years past, they've waited until after Labor Day, but they're going back to school tomorrow. So our Sagatuck High School students are going back to school tomorrow. I think Hamilton and some of the surrounding schools went back last week already. So we're a little short-staffed in the business community, so please be patient. A lot of business owners in town are working a lot of long hours. I know I've been talking to many of them, so just be patient with our businesses in town, and I don't know, just be extra kind to all of the people that are working still in our tourist community. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?